I want to call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-five at nine a.m. Commissioner's courtroom, one sixty-two West First Street, Trinity County Courthouse, Groton, Texas. And Mr. Long, Chief from Texas Refrigerator, Calvary Temple, Assemblyman John.
Thanks again for the opportunity. Yes, sir. Father, we just love you and appreciate you, Lord. We thank you for Trinity County. This is where we live. This is where we pastor. This is where we work. This is our life. And I thank you for these gentlemen and ladies that take care of our county. I pray for the first responders of every group. Father, as you're watching over them, keep them safe, keep our schools safe, keep our families safe. We just ask you, Lord, now to guide them, direct them, and pass it to you, Lord, to go. And we give you praise and honor and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
The public forum, Mr. Derrick Wilson.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm good. Just want to give y'all a little reminder.
How are you?
I'm good. Been pretty busy this year.
Pretty busy.
And obviously, there's always more need than we have funding for. So if there's any funding anywhere, that's what we're looking for today. I realize I probably need to get on the agenda, but I just thought I'd turn these in, and I would have the chance to look at them, bring them over, look at the statistics, things like that. If y'all have any questions at all.
No, we're still.
Well, what we do is the vouchers, they are given to only the citizens in Trinity County. We hand these vouchers out, and they can go get their animals, baby, for free through the D. Hart Vet Services, which is a model unit. So for Trinity County, we issued a hundred and sixteen for county citizens this year, which was a cost of seven thousand three hundred and forty dollars. The city of Groton, the people that live inside the city limits of Groton, we handed out fourteen vouchers, the cost of... Now, these costs fluctuate because cats and dogs, it's different cost, males, females, and dogs and cats. Eight hundred and seventy for the city of Groton. In the city of Trinity, they handed out forty-five total vouchers for people that live inside the city limits of Trinity, for a total amount of two thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Now, these... If you look at your numbers on the next page, it chooses the Trinity County number, on your puppies and kittens, these numbers are just specifically for those dogs and cats that are spay neutered, not for the offspring, you know, that weren't spay neutered and all that. So it's a huge amount. The amount of puppies and kittens those animals can have in a lifetime, people don't even believe the numbers are so big. It's just kind of an explosion thing whenever it happens. So we're just looking at basically the money that's saved by having this done. Seventy-eight to eighty percent of all animals going into shelters are intact. And fifty percent of those animals are between the ages of five months and three years. Now, those figures tell you right there that spay neutered is the problem. Because if we can cut this population down of these animals, if people were getting them done, and the only reason that they don't generally is because they count for it in this economy and everything. It's just the animals are the last things that get something done. So anyway, that's my presentation this morning, my open forum. Don't want to take up too much of y'all's time, but I know it's a good program. It is working.
Yeah.
So...
You've been dedicated all these years.
I've never been dedicated since I was a kid, I think.
About the way time you come to Trinity, that Brooks Brothers parking lot, it is full, and there is people there all the time.
Yes, and that's becoming an issue because we can't get the animals in that people have vouchers for within the three months that we make them expire. You know, we expire them three months. That way, we know what kind of funding we still have to give out the next voucher vouchers.
Lindsay, would you put a vote in Miss Vicki's ear to look out there and see if there's any kind of grant fund? She's been able to provide grants for lots of different stuff.
Yes, I know the state of Texas has grant money also from that Lysand Blade Fund, the Animal Family Fund.
Okay, that's Nancy. You need to get with Nancy, because she decides where they go.
Yeah. That would be really... And that's specifically for spay neutering.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Well, they have behind you a hundred percent.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank y'all for y'all's time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thank you for this presentation.
Number four, through the minutes, or November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, regular session.
I read through, and I didn't find the script. Let's see if someone else has found anything, and move this up.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five, here's the presentation of OCI Energy by Cummings West Lake.
Hello.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. We, me and Judge sit in, this is a solar plant that made me come into the county that I, me and Judge, sit in on. The video interview with them, talked, and we, you know, they explained to us what all was going to inspire, but we wanted y'all to hear.
My name's Stephen Bayback. Welcome to our second tax consultant. I help companies that navigate tax abatements for renewables or other types of projects. I've got Josh from OCI Energy. He's the developer. I'll let him kind of talk about himself, his company, and his project. One of the reasons we are here today is possibly talk about a tax abatement. It's a little further down the road. I don't think you guys have been approached for a tax abatement before, as far as I know. So at least wanted to start with the project. So I'll let him go ahead and introduce himself and his project, and we can discuss later.
Yes, sir. Josh Richardson with OCI Energy. We're in San Antonio here. The solar project is Triumph Solar is the name of it. And so I've got everybody a little presentation, just easier to follow along. First page, just a little bit about the company. OCI Holdings is the parent company, and then I'm with OCI Energy, who actually does the development and then owns and operates some projects. We are in San Antonio. Our sister company, Mission Solar, manufactures the panels right there outside of San Antonio. They're the longest-running solar panel manufacturer in Texas. They're in the middle of an expansion project. They can manufacture larger amounts of the panels. So it's a real point of pride that our projects, we manufacture the panels here in Texas instead of importing. The next page, just where we're at as a company. We, as you can see, our main focus is Texas. We're expanding a little bit into the southeast, but we're going to maintain in Texas moving forward, just expanding a little bit. And the next page, just overview of the project. It's going to be a one hundred megawatt solar project. We're located about four miles south of Groton. The estimated investment is a hundred million or more. The community benefits, the landowner gets paid, the increased tax base for the project, and then some of the indirect benefits would be the lodging, the housing, the services, and subcontractors for the construction of the project. We'll all stay here locally and eat locally, and then everything we can source locally, we do, just in terms of materials or contractors there. And then the benefits of a project like this would be electricity for around twenty thousand homes in Texas. Our projects are reliable. In two thousand twenty-four, for all the projects we own and operate, we maintain ninety-nine percent availability. So once the project's built, it'll be producing, and we'll keep it in good shape. After construction, there's no air emissions or noise or odor, no additional burden on any traffic after construction is completed.
And what's the lifespan of the land?
We have for thirty years, and then we have the option to extend ten years twice, so a maximum of fifty years.
How many acres will this be?
We'll probably build on roughly eight hundred acres. I think under lease is nine hundred and fifty, but we won't be using all of the land.
If you look at this map here, it's going to be...
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we're seeing. So how did you pick this location?
We looked at interconnection and how much load certain transmission lines have. And the transmission line we're connecting here had a good spot. It's not in ERCOT, it's actually in MISO South. So we were... I had that picture with all of our projects, we're mainly in ERCOT. So this was a good opportunity to stay in Texas, which we like, but also expand to the MISO South region.
Are y'all the same company that has those over in... Okay.
I do not think so. We don't have, haven't worked on a project that... That's not us. But that's the main reason, is just the transmission line has enough room for a hundred solar project of this size, plus it allows us to expand to the MISO South region, which we don't have any projects there.
What's the environmental issues after fifty years?
After fifty years, in Texas, there's regulations. We have to take everything out and return the land to what it is, and there should, there's no leaching. I know it's a big thing people worry about, something. And there's nothing like that with how the solar panels are manufactured. There'll be no issues there. And then we have to return the land to what it was. We can't leave any equipment on the side or anything like that.
So your contract is thirty to fifty years. That you might say the lifespan of the machine is that, right?
The lifespan, once it's constructed, it'll produce for thirty years. And if the equipment is still good and there's still room on the line and everything, we would extend the option by ten years. And then there's a second option of another ten years. So as long as everything is good, we would extend and keep producing for that fifty. But it's a thirty-year... It'll be there for thirty years after construction.
What is the value of the infrastructure that you're going to put in? Like, if you were to tax this infrastructure, what's it worth?
A hundred million.
A hundred million?
That's what the cost would be. And then it would be depreciated. Texas mandates that solar must be depreciated on their ten-year life. So it'll floor out at twenty percent after ten years, but it'll stay at that twenty... Assuming a hundred billion, be twenty million dollars in perpetuity years eleven through fifty, assuming that it's still there.
Does Trinity County get anything besides taxes off of us?
Like...
Well, I mean, y'all talking about a hundred million. We can't even spell that up here. But anyway, is there any royalties coming to us through this?
Well, that's the part of the...
Or what?
So part of the reason we're here is to talk about a tax abatement. And tax abatements help these projects get built. Because I'm working on ten other projects with them around Texas, and so they're competing for investment. So with all these ten projects, they look at, stack them up, and they look at the ROI on all of them. The ones that have better ROIs have a better chance of getting built. So if it doesn't have a tax abatement, it drops to the bottom. So if we get a tax abatement, what we would try and do is, they call it a pilot payment. So there's traditional abatements where, just say seventy percent abatement. So if their tax bill was a million dollars, they pay you three hundred. You would get three hundred thousand, they would keep seven hundred K. Obviously, it would go down over time because of depreciation. Then there's a pilot payment structure where you figure out what the taxes would be over ten years, add it all together, divide by ten, and divide by the number of megawatts, and you come up with a dollar per megawatt. And instead of having, you would get the same payment for all ten years. Instead of getting a depreciating one, you'd say get two... Instead of getting, say, three hundred, two hundred, one hundred, fifty, like depreciating will just be a hundred thousand dollars for ten years. So they're paying a little less in the first five years, but then they're paying this... On the back, six years, six to ten, they're paying a little more than they should. So it's streamlined for you guys. It's a contractual payment. You guys know what you're going to get. They know what they're going to pay. And it also goes outside your effective tax rate. So that's why a lot of counties like to do it, is that you don't have to put it in your effective tax rate calculations.
So I guess my question is, what other counties have you dealt with that you've got a abatement with so far?
Hardeman, we're working on Kent, Hill County, Bell County...
That's fine, but...
Freestone.
What kind of abatement did you get? Was it a five-year or...
Ten-year.
Ten years?
That's the maximum you can get is a ten-year.
Maximum you get?
Per state.
And they all did this pilot?
They did, because they like it, they know what they're going to get, and then it's out. Like I said, it's outside.
You can count on it between twenty and twenty-one when you do it that way?
Yes.
You can actually figure it into a budget.
You know it's going to be a hundred thousand.
Right. Whereas with the percentage, you have to wait till the appraisal district does their thing, and then you get it, and then it could be July, August, before you know what the value is. And then you guys can work your stuff. Whereas for this, like I said, for ten years...
Is the county the only one that you asked for a tax abatement through, or is it...
There used to be one for the schools, called the Three Thirteen, but it sunsetted in two thousand twenty-two. And they have a new program out called the...
What's that thing, sunsetted?
Uh, no more. It isn't. Yeah.
Well, okay. Well, I ain't never heard that, but I wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah. No longer is in existence. There's a new program called the Four Oh Three, but it specifically excludes renewables. So the only thing is for the county, and then depending on the other taxing jurisdictions, if they have a higher tax rate, we may approach them, but we normally start with the county.
Sounds good. Anything to promote Trinity County, we need it.
So I'm sure you told me and Judge on the computer the other day, after the ten, what happens?
Goes on like full tax, like just normal...
After ten years, it reverts back to just regular?
Yep.
But it depreciates after ten years, correct?
Yeah, it'll floor out after ten years, at twenty percent.
How many people do you hire to maintain it every year?
Maintain it? A project like this, a full crew is probably two or three people. That'll be full-time, just doing maintenance.
You got to mow around all the poles and everything?
It depends. I haven't got the next picture. Sometimes we hire someone, like a better term, a sheep herder, rent sheep or something like that. Or we hire someone to mow, like you're asking.
So y'all do graze around?
Yes, we have.
I heard that y'all, they put sheep stuff out.
Yes, sir. It works pretty well. You can't... Cows are very destructive, and goats like to jump on stuff, so I fell on the sheep.
You get your cows, now hold up.
They're big.
Do you like steak?
I do, yes.
I don't know if you're a sheep farmer, Dr. Ring, if you tag?
Yeah, I know one, but we leave that alone.
And just to finish, there's a little project milestones page. We're doing all of the testing right now. It should be done here pretty quick. We've done the surface real estate. We have the survey and everything, but we're looking for critical issues in endangered species and testing soil and all of that. All of the requirements are underway right now.
Is this land already cleared?
Majority of it is. You can't really see on the map because I highlighted it. But that was why we chose looking in this area and then liking that piece of land. Was there...
I thought it was going to be pretty thick.
That's a plus, too.
Well, I don't know about all that. I just wonder if I got there.
And then the pictures, it's just, these are pictures of our current sites we have of and operating in Texas right now. And then the last page is just contact info for myself, my boss, James, and then Steve.
So after y'all get all y'all books in the room, figuring out, let's say y'all wanted this... Y'all pick this over to the other places in Texas. Y'all come back to us, put it back on the agenda, I guess, and then...
Well, we need, probably need to do that before, so we can get stacked up against the other ones. So that's why I was going to kind of go through the process. So there's a thing called guilings and criteria, and it's essentially a document that allows you guys to enter into abatements. And I've got a couple attorneys you guys can talk to, the represent counties. You guys can pick. They'll pay the fees, et cetera. Need to get that document created, voted on, and then that allows us to actually submit an application for a tax abatement. So then, once we submit the application, you guys can review it. We have to create a reinvestment zone, which is essentially just earmarking the land that they're going to build on. So they want you to, like, say, we're going to build on the east side of the county, and then six months later, like, no, we're going to build over here. And this, like, they're just saying, hey, we're going to build here. And everything has to be within that side, that reinvestment zone. Once that is created, then we would come back. There's a public hearing for the reinvestment zone. There's a public hearing for the abatement before it gets voted on. For the reinvestment zone, it needs to be put in the paper seven days in advance if you guys voting on it. And for the abatement, it needs to be posted in the courthouse at least thirty days in advance if you guys voting. So I can help with all this stuff. But I mean, from now, if we say yes, we'd like to...
I'm getting comfortable.
No. Creating a reinvestment zone doesn't necessarily mean that you'll, you know, will create the abatement, but, and then, you know, get the vote on the abatement. But it'll probably be a two-month, three-month process with Christmas and New Year's and all that. I've, there goes three weeks of, you know, everything else. So, but I can get you guys in touch with an attorney or two, and you guys can pick who you want to go with, and we can be in touch and kind of guide you what is through. But we will come back and do another follow-up presentation. You guys remember this now, but any questions that arise, public, et cetera. But yeah, we just wanted to...
And you come back to do the public, but if you'd come and present that other one?
Yeah, we will do the same as that presentation.
Are there any other regulations in other counties? Like, y'all turn away from other counties that they don't, that they have?
That we don't...
Regulations to keep you out of other counties? Like, if you were going to go to Houston County, or, for instance, and they had something that y'all liked? Is there anything like that out there?
I don't think it's keeping them out. It's more them trying to find the sweet spot of a transmission line.
Exactly. They're close to a power line.
And this project is tied to this land in the county. If we go somewhere like this, we wouldn't, this project would go somewhere else because we have the lease signed with this landowner. We're already in the queue with MISO South, which they're very slow, but we've already tied in right there. That's where this project would be, it's not moving.
So if everything went all right, how long up here do you...
It, I'm there, I put construction in two thousand twenty-nine. MISO South is very slow, and I won't get into the particulars. They do it in clusters. Right now, they're in quarter four of two thousand twenty-three because they're two years behind for who knows why. So I just put a long date. Hopefully, they would get done with two thousand twenty-three, and then maybe twenty-four and twenty-five would be quicker. If there's less, it just, not like ERCOT. If this was ERCOT, you know, we could maybe be done with interconnection in nine months. MISO South, you just kind of put in, and then you sit and wait for them to make it to your cluster, which I don't give you which cluster. I'm not exactly sure. We're probably in two thousand twenty-five. So it could be two years, it could be four years, just how slow they're going.
Now, ten to fifty years, the property goes back to the landowner?
Yes. Well, they all, they own it the whole time, it's not that they...
Well, I know they own it, it's just lease, so it's what you got.
Yes, after fifty years, everything gets removed.
Yes, right.
And if potholes for the piles and things, everything gets filled in and all gets taken away. Nothing, nothing left. If the landowner wants to keep roads or fences, we do that. But all the, everything, landowner doesn't want gets taken out.
Then we go back to grazing cattle, Tiger, we'd be all right. It's just a win-win situation for Trinity County because the land is under timber or grazing.
And that's another thing, it'll come out of ag. So it'll be three years of ag rolled back, and that's going with it.
Say it's a win-win situation.
Well, I guess you'll stay in touch.
Yeah, we have pretty much...
And tell us the next step we need to do.
Yeah, I appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. I'll be down to see them.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll take you down, man, for one. Same case. Okay, number six. I choose... You jumping around here.
Same thing, me and Lindsey set it up. Y'all asked for us to set up a meeting with the IT about reconstructing the contract, and we sat down with them, the judge sitting with them. And they explained to all of us, but we want them, hey, they want to come and talk to y'all as well, explain it to y'all, where all's...
Was that one of them kind of starting or rolling? You just don't make them do it because they don't ask questions?
Good morning. I'm General Manager at IT Maple. Thank you for having me this morning. This is Chris Smith. We came in last week and sat down with Mr. Park, Judge Martin, and Lindsey, and addressed some questions that had already been raised at that point. And we're here to navigate through any other questions that you may have. In addition to that, we're in need of clarification. But at the end of the day, we're here to take your technology headaches off of you as a burden and come in here and provide some service for you and make things better from a technology perspective.
So as we understand it, the vote to no shine was here prior, and we would be taking on all the responsibilities that he did just as an outside contractor.
Is this the same company?
Yes, same company. They were contracted.
We helped kill previously, but we didn't manage it. So basically, he can call us whenever he needed help, and we'll be taking that all on.
Great. They just walked him through stuff that he would buy. If it wouldn't run, then they would help him get it.
Another one was tax.
Yeah, actually.
And the cost is going to be eleven thousand, six hundred dollars, started?
That's the start of. That's us coming through, getting familiar with everything. Prior to this, we didn't really have any familiarity. We would just go based on what he told us.
What do you think, you didn't have a familiarity?
So we didn't know how he said, where it was installed. We need to go through kind of inventory, what you have, and what closets, what rooms they're in.
Well, it's a mess. I dig, I wasn't...
We understand that. And that's what this is, to help clean that up.
And the monthly cost is forty-three fifty?
Uh, yes, sir.
Can you do a little bit better than that?
So one thing we did talk to Mr. Park about was, we had two hour...
So, one thing we did talk to Mr. Park about was, we had two hours of discretionary time built in there at first. Um, and if we don't need that moving forward after the first couple of months, and things level set, things get cleaned up and work as they're supposed to, we can reduce that discretionary hours to where maybe it's half that, or twenty hours.
Yeah, twenty, thirty hours. And they got twenty hours to fit in just to get started and figure it out, but from the looks of it, we haven't been using twenty hours a, a month. Calling and, and getting stuff, so they make and calm that down, and that'll take away, see this twenty, and it'll take away some of this one, twenty a month.
Oh, well, most, knowing the monthly, that's the problem, right? The monthly.
Yeah, right now, we have twenty hours for, and we bill basically fifteen million increments, so that's eighty calls a month.
Well, nothing ever goes down, you know, in our world right here.
We, we talked a bit about that as well, and making sure that you have backup connections, so that it doesn't actually go down.
So, how long is this contract for?
One year.
One year, you just do a one-year that?
That's right.
We talked about that as well, and you can talk more about, because I asked if, you know, after that one year, is it gonna go up or what?
It's based on your need, ultimately, right, so if the county grows, there will be additional charges for, if you build a new building and had new equipment in there, but over the last eight years, we haven't gone up at any of our prices.
So, if we build a new building next to us and put a bunch of computers in it, a bunch of offices, then that price fluctuation will go up.
Based on that, based on equipment, yeah.
So, but if it adds up, it's about, what, we're about fifty-one thousand, and we're paying fifty-seven or fifty-nine in the other one.
And plus the.
Plus our costs.
Plus, plus the fact we're paying them five hundred a month for five hours to help out Sean, that is built into this. So, we won't have to pay that, uh, some of the.
And, and the, and the big deal I asked them was on the firewall, about getting hacked. Y'all said y'all just, y'all was good all the way through, correct?
Yes, sir, so we put lots of protections into your firewall to keep that kind of thing from happening.
Yes, and we've had to go through all kinds of heaven with that.
If, if we, if we decide to, to adjust the contract to this, how long is the, the solar process for this? Y'all wanna go there, but how long do you think before we're on the road, go?
February.
February.
So, it'd be the month of January, most likely that we would do that.
January, you'd take a month and, and do it and start.
You'd rather yourself with everything.
Yes, sir.
Let me add one more question. Who's gonna be the, the go-to person, it's gonna be?
We're talking about that, kind of filtering it through her office, like, like it's being, didn't we talk about that?
Yeah.
I, I just don't think it's, you need every department head or every.
Well, what, what they said, y'all pretty much are wrong, if I'm wrong. Um, let's say I call Lindsey and say my computer messed up, if she can't figure it out, she can call me, then figure it out over the phone. Instead of them coming over, we'd have to take a bunch of their hours.
I just say it needs to be a go-to.
Yeah, be able to contact her. Because really, we only have twenty hours a month, so we need to.
That's right, what me and Tommy talked about, and this one deal there was that we didn't want the department heads calling them, they wanna try to prove to them.
Correct.
That's right.
Certain things documented, we can just put one contact to y'all, that deal, you know?
We, we work either way, we're happy to.
If they do, you know, something like that, then they gonna contact her, which I'll say.
Well, I think it's a, it's as good as we're gonna get for right now, so I make the motion to approve it.
I'll second it, I'll, I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Y'all listen to Mayor Number Seven.
We'll do seven.
Oh, we hear hesitation. Read off the number seven. Discuss an act on approval and amendment contract for IT? Do I still make the motion?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got your contract, we'll send y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you guys. In January, y'all start?
Yes, sir.
And in February, we should be good to go.
One, one last question, you know Ken to that one, or?
I, I don't, probably some way.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, guys, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, number eight, discuss an act on approval and amendment.
Tiger will see.
Tiger? Tiger, be careful, I thought you still sent in with us a while.
Well, I gotta go to work, maybe.
Oh.
I'll need to be first.
Yeah, thank you. Lindsey and, this is out of the district, I, I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
He's, they're trying to get my second all the time.
As soon as you lose. I think I afford to, you know, a thousand. Number nine, discuss an act of approval on personal action form.
Yes, good morning, the first one, we're gonna, um, pull, the person didn't show up, they were no show.
Who was it?
The very first PAF is a no show, they didn't show up to work.
Okay.
So, just, just, yeah, this is for them, so.
Well, we used to have that name and change it.
Oh.
I knew it.
Okay, well, he didn't show up to work. So, the second one is on the grant administrator, the part-time position.
Make a motion to approve it.
Oh, I think, hold on, I have one more.
What?
You're going.
Oh, you got it now?
This one came in just a little bit late, this is just a separation.
Oh.
I'll second it, if you still make the motion.
Yeah.
I'm a paper second.
Sorry.
Make a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you, man.
And, uh, congratulations on your new title.
Thank you.
Good day.
Yes, good day, thank you.
Number ten, discuss an act on approval and complete check.
In November, we paid a total of five hundred and eighty-two thousand, a hundred dollars and thirty cents, including payroll. And the vendor invoice through AP was two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-one and thirty-three cents.
Any questions?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
My second. Steve, your second.
Aye, aye. Number eleven, discuss an act on approval with C, real handling service. This is a program that, uh, looks like in our standing state, we're allowed three to three hundred and fifty thousand. And that, and it's a grant, correctly, to that, that qualify.
And that is, this grant is to go towards handling service?
On handling service.
And it, there's no match to it, I'm making a motion to approve?
I'll say it, love it. All in favor?
Aye.
Judge, uh, I, Ms. Vicki is, is a go-getter on the grants, and I commend you on, on backing that up. We've, we've got a bunch of grants in the past couple of years that we've had hurt. It's showbiz. We appreciate everything that we got. Everybody's done a great job, but they all pitched in with it.
I know y'all have, and we appreciate it, it's there, we want it.
Another one that we're, one after, ain't getting to the first, but for our community center out here, but. One. Yeah, I'm just looking, see, I, I see two stickers on the three, I'm looking. Uh, when is our, when is our Christmas party?
September twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
We got court, that's one of the, uh, I guess, that most of them do.
Okay. Is that it?
When we gonna have it then?
I make a motion to.
What, where are we gonna have it?
It's at the Y.
Huh?
At the Y.
Please, sir.
Are we gonna have that, say Y?
Yeah.
Okay.
The motion do it. I'm just saying, so I make a motion.
All in favor? Aye.